All right, let's get this going. The City Marine City Commission Meeting, Marine City Fire Hall. Regular meeting Thursday, October 3rd, 7:00 PM. Could we please take a moment of silence for a dearly departed? And let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Here.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Flossin.
Here.
Commissioner Merchant.
Here.
Commissioner Verkanen.
Here.
All right, moving on to approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Any changes or deletions anyone wants to make? Remember now, we need to, if you want to take something out of the consent agenda, that we need to do it now, to discuss anything on the consent agenda. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carried. Moving on to public comment. Anyone in attendance is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and address. Limit your comments to five minutes, and this is your time for you to raise issues. The Commission will not respond at this time, but issues will be followed up upon as necessary.
Kathy Verton, 560 South Water Street. I'm not here to raise an issue or complain. I read something in the paper, and I came to actually, I wanted to commend Commissioner Verkanen for introducing the idea of term limits on local legislators. Term limits have been approved almost everywhere that they've been on the ballot because concerned citizens see them as positive structural reform. It's a way to ensure a regular supply of fresh blood and new ideas in legislative bodies, and to open the system to more people from a variety of professions. A tenet of democracy is the idea that anyone can be elected to serve in public office and represent their community, but the incumbent advantage makes electing new talent increasingly improbable. It's no secret that political incumbents are privileged due to their home court advantages like name and even facial recognition, especially when we broadcast. Well-established connections due to increased access from serving, which leads to a local network, and increased opportunity to engage with citizens. For the average person, it makes the prospect of actually getting elected less probable and alienating. If an election is merely a referendum on an incumbent's performance, then we need to introduce thoughtful mechanisms that help voters evaluate a commissioner's record through actual data rather than relying on gossip Facebook posts and casual familiarity. Those who argue against term limits often claim you will have inexperienced legislators. That's a red herring. The job of a board is to provide guidance and oversight. The city manager and administrators are the ones who require intricate knowledge and experience. As one who served on a university board for a number of years, I can assure you that a leader does not need detailed operational knowledge to ask insightful questions and provide executive-level guidance. The best commissioners leave the minutia of running the municipality to the city manager and to other employees, and instead provide strategic leadership. With regard to municipal offices, term limits date back to at least 1851, when the Indiana State Constitution imposed them for almost every elected county office. The 10 largest cities in the U.S. have imposed term limits on local legislators with the exception of Chicago, and 27 Michigan municipalities have term limits as well. Studies show that boards and companies that added three new directors over a four-year period outperformed their industry peers, suggesting an optimal amount of turnover. You can say government is different than business, but many would argue that if cities were run more like businesses, it wouldn't be a bad thing. In closing, it was Benjamin Franklin who summed up the best case for term limits more than two centuries ago. "In free governments, the rulers are the servants, and the people their superiors. For the former to return among the latter does not degrade, but promotes them." So I support term limits, and I think it's a very good suggestion. Thanks.
Anyone else like to speak? Yes.
Hi, Laura Scotch, 430 South Water Street. I'm here representing the Chamber of Commerce. We have a wonderful event coming on this Saturday, Pumpkin Palooza. It's our fourth annual. It's an event that is run by wonderful volunteers, community leaders, and area businesses. This year, we have a number of different activities going on. In addition to pumpkin carving, which will start at 4:00 in Nautical Mile Park, we also have a haunted park in the Civic Women's Park, which will begin at, I believe, 7:00 PM. We have a zombie pub crawl for this year. We have a banking contest that will be at the Sweet Tooth. We have a bake sale that will be at the Chamber of Commerce. So it's definitely a community event, and we encourage families and friends and everybody to come out and enjoy a wonderful time. So I just want to thank everybody that's been involved in this project, our local businesses, our community leaders, and our wonderful volunteers. So I hope you guys can make it. Thanks.
Anyone else like to speak? Hearing none, let's move on to approval of the City Commission Minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the Commission Minute, September 19th, 2019?
So moved.
Support.
Any corrections or deletions to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carried. Moving on to the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the items A and B on the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion, support. Roll call, both, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkanen.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes. Moving on to the financial business, disbursements including payroll of $140,429.87.
I make a motion to approve total disbursements including payroll for $140,429.87.
Support.
Any questions on the disbursements? Hearing none, roll call, both, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkanen.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
All right, moving on to new business, River Act Teen Zone Public Ice Rink. Laura?
Sorry, I did not provide a quote for the rink, but here it is, and here's some more detailed information for each of you to look at. Thank you. I'm not going to copy, so. On the River Act Teen Zone, I would like to, I submitted a letter. I have two individuals who would like to remain anonymous, who would like to donate funds up to $5,000 in order to bring an ice skating rink to Marine City. This is something that in 2017 was proposed to the Commission, but at the time, I don't think we had a funding available. So this would be something that we would like to propose in conjunction with the support of the city, meaning, you know, possibly the city helping out with the insurance portion of it, and maybe the installation. We may actually also be able to get some volunteers involved in the installation. So the quote that you have in front of you, I believe, is about $4,200. That does not include shipping, so that's something that would be in addition to, and it would be something that I would work with Mike Itrich in conjunction with him to make it happen and get it here, set up, and everything else. It would be something that they could use every single year. So I'm looking to hope that we can get support from the city.
Where were you thinking about, where did you want it placed?
I think ideally, Nautical Mile Park would be, you know, a great place. I think that's what was proposed a few years ago, so that would be wonderful. 300 Broadway could be a possibility, being the teen center is there, but I think 300, I think Nautical Mile Park is really the ideal place for it. It's spacious, it's open, you know, I think that would, that is it, you know, that is really the spot. Any questions?
At Nautical Mile Park, isn't there grade there? I mean, doesn't it kind of go, I just want to make sure that it's, 300 Broadway is pretty flat, where Nautical Mile?
300 Broadway, you know, that, there might be some limitations there, just because it is a historic park, so I don't know what, you know, but that is a possibility. I think Mike did address those issues with grade back in 2017. I do believe that when you set up the rink, that there is leveling that can be done for the grading issues.
And then the grade issue wouldn't be as bad, as long as the, um...
It's horizontal.
Rink is actually north and south instead of east and west.
Right.
Because it's narrower, it's only 40 feet wide, so that would eliminate a lot of the grade issue.
Right. There's a couple items on there that I did not include, that maybe if, if we can get up to $5,000, so there could be a hockey rink, there can be a net that can be added. So there are some accessories that could be added to this proposal with the 5,000, you know, with the additional funds that we've been able to secure.
And at Nautical Park, that's where you have all electricity for everything?
There really isn't, other than lighting, if there's lighting at nighttime, so I don't think there is any electric, because this is not a refrigerated unit.
I think the only thing his concern is, we have some electrical running underneath there, so when they pump the stakes and...
No, it, Mike is very aware of where, because we've had Miss Dig in, and so we know exactly where that's running, so we would be, make sure that that wouldn't pose a problem.
I just meant for power to light up the skating area.
Yeah.
You could set up floodlight.
It would have a lot of power.
Yeah, there's a lot of power on both sides.
So this was, this was looked into, what you said, you thought a couple of years ago. Did we get to the point of liability insurance, and what that would cost, and that kind of thing? Did we get to that point?
No.
I thought they had inquired with staff, or no, Steven Saft? No?
I don't have any information regarding that.
You could call.
Hmm?
So these pictures, this is just the side, and then did they put, like, plastic?
Yeah, yep, so there's a liner on the first page of the quote. It will give you the size of the rink, and then the size of the liner.
I don't think with insurance, there would be any additional cost. I don't think that it's much more risky than any of the park equipment we already have on the policy.
Wouldn't we have to maybe have it indoors, though?
He'd want to know about it, but I don't think it'll raise your premiums.
Okay.
Biggest thing is when, the end of the year, after researching this twice now.
Right.
And this company is very good that you've selected.
Right.
But the biggest thing is drying that liner and storing it properly, so that it doesn't mold.
Right.
So that we can continue.
Use it every year, yeah.
That's the biggest issue with them.
Right, right. So this will be something that we will work with, you know, DPW, to make sure that it is successful, and that we can get it going, and, you know, they do it in St. Clair, you know. I think it'll be awesome.
As long as the weather cooperates.
Yeah, exactly. Well, you know, they say it's supposed to be really cold, so I was just, you know, how I'm at, but, so we hope for your support. I think this will be awesome. It's another community thing, it's another thing that a lot of people did express interest when we had thrown out a series of questions to the community and to the kids, you know, having an ice skating rink is something that will be.
So do we need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we allow the city manager to work with River Act Teen Zone to continue to put together the ice rink.
Support.
Motion, support. Any other questions on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Carried.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Friends of City Hall request for a waiver.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, citizens. Before I get to my request, I wanted to just touch base with some thank yous. We just had our Heritage Days for 2019 a week and a half ago, and we wanted to give a shout out to the DPW and the Police Department for their help, and along with a number of other local companies, but I wanted to mention, I wanted to mention Marine City DPW and Marine City Police for their contribution. Your packet, I'm assuming, has a letter from Mrs. Judy White, the President of Friends of City Hall, and Judy had called me and asked me to step in for it, so if you're wondering why I'm here, it's, um, our request is for permits to begin installation of a new heating system, new water line, and a new phase of the fires, and the first phase of this fire suppression system in City Hall. And there's a request for a waiver of permit fees for the furnace, the new water line, and the fire suppression system. Now, a few months back, we installed Mr. Hubert Smith's Antique City Streetlight. It was installed in the square, and the help from the mayor and the city most kindly waived the permit fee for that project. We're hoping that this precedent can be extended to the upcoming projects, which will save Friends of City Hall a number of dollars. We certainly hope the City Commissioners will be sympathetic to our request. Things at the City Hall are moving forward, our business plan is moving, and a number of people that came to Heritage Day and got a look into the building, were quite impressed with it, so we're, we're hoping that you'll be kind enough to, uh, to permit these, permits to be given, and without a fee. So we hope, we look forward to your, to your answers quickly. Thank you. Is there anything?
Um, the inspections and permits for, like, fire suppression and furnace have to be done by a third party else. We have to pay for those inspections.
Building official, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, all of those would be...
I mean, the building official would be in-house, but the, like, fire suppression and the furnace, we'd have to pay that.
Correct, yeah. If you waived fees, it in essence would be us paying it out of the general fund.
Okay. I'm just getting clarification.
We still have to pay the inspectors.
Right.
So that, that's a cost to us anyway.
Right.
Do we have a rough ballpark of how much these fees would be?
We don't have anything at this point. We have not received any type of application. We don't know how much piping is going to be run, how much electrical outlets, anything are going to be needed, what the sizing is, so until we have detailed information about the submission and request, we wouldn't be able to give an estimate on the costs.
I, I don't, I don't know how can we, we can approve something that we don't know the cost of. I mean, I think, I think this might be something we want to table until we get a better idea of what this is going to cost. I mean, we could say today, it's going to cost us $1,000, and it could end up costing us $10,000. You know, I think it's something that we need to look into further.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think it's a good idea, because, you know, we're investing in our future if it's a city-owned building. But, yeah, I agree. I mean, without actual costs, I mean...
I don't think we'll be able to waive. So, would you like to put that motion to table?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that we table the request from the Friends of City Hall to waive permit fees for the furnace, new water line, and fire suppression system until we have a better estimate of what it's going to cost us to do so.
Support. Motion, support. Any other comments or questions on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carried. Thank you.
Thank you for your help. We'll get your information to you so quickly as we can.
Appreciate it, thank you. Winter parking permits.
Let me give a little bit of history on the winter parking permits. So, back in 20, early 2018, we made some amendments to the winter parking ordinance. The ordinance that we had up to then, when it was formed, maybe back in the 80s, gave a lot of discretion, and it was kind of subjective for the police chief to be the authority that managed the winter parking permits. And through Planning Commission and City Commission, in early 2018, we revised the ordinance. We put better rules in place, so that we would make sure that we were treating everybody the same, and had rules in-house, so that we knew who we should be issuing them to. One of the things that has happened in the year since then is that St. Clair, who have a similar program, put a moratorium or stopped requiring the winter parking permits and allowed for on-street parking in the winter months. Our ordinance defines the winter months as December 1st to March 31st. So we had talked about this maybe about six months ago, to consider putting a moratorium on the winter parking permits and try it out in Marine City as well. I did speak to the previous city manager of St. Clair. He said they didn't really have any issues, any significant issues with having the street parking in the winter. So that's why this is before you, is to consider putting a moratorium on it and see how it works within Marine City. I did have some conversations with Mike about it. He did express some of his concerns, I think, in the past at the Commission, when we were talking about it, that you will potentially see issues where we have more call-outs for people, once their vehicles have been moved, to please come plow this area, maybe a little bit more wear and tear on equipment, because you get to a point where you have piles of snow and ice that get hard-packed, and it has a tendency to potentially tear the equipment up a little bit. Other, other things include that vehicles may get plowed in, people will be responsible for unburying their vehicle if for some reason it does get plowed in. If we have a significant amount of snow, we can still do snow emergencies. That would enable us to make sure that people get off the streets, so that we can fully plow if, say, we do get a significant snow event. The ordinance, we included language to allow for parking in the front yard and easement during snow emergencies, so as part of the moratorium, I would certainly recommend that we continue to allow that for snow emergencies.
We already had a lot of those issues, because, I mean, this is only from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM, so when we had snow during the day, people were parked in the street, and they got plowed in anyway, so, I mean, it's not like that's something different. How did St. Clair, though, make sure that they got out a snow emergency? They have issues getting that out to the...
For their notification. I'm not sure what they did, but last time we talked about it, we talked about putting signs at the entrances of the city for snow emergency, so that when you come into the city through, through our streets, you would know that there is a snow emergency issue.
Plus, you can post it on the webpage.
Right, all, all the other mediums.
Yeah. Well, this has been an ongoing issue. I think people wanted us to try this, same as St. Clair, and since St. Clair pulled it off, I, to me, I think we had to give it a year and see how it goes, and see if we have any issues with it. I don't think it'll be as bad.
I don't think that we really have anything to lose trying this.
No.
It does take up a lot of administrative time to administer this program, and obviously, it puts a burden on the residents, having to come in and get their permits and pay for them. So I think it's a win-win to at least try it.
Yeah, I agree.
Can we get a motion, then?
You know what our truck width is to go down a street that's snowplowed? Are they 12-foot?
Nope.
What are they?
Nine.
And pick up from under the trucks?
Eight or nine.
Okay. Because, do you guys just feel that they're going to do the center, and that's it? Right?
No, no, they'll still be able to make two passes on each way, but they'll go around the vehicles.
Okay.
So, can we get a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to put a, how do you want to do this? Put a moratorium on our ordinance?
But still allow the on, on property parking?
Well, still allow temporary parking and easement.
Personal emergencies.
Personal emergencies, all right.
Support.
Any further questions on this? Set on a roll call, now. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Carried. Moving on to columbarium. Did I pronounce that right, Paul?
Yeah, unfortunately, Mike could not be here tonight. I know he wanted to kind of be a part of this conversation, but he did want me to reiterate to you that this was the same quote that was obtained for the budget hearing, and started moving forward on this. He did provide three quotes for you in regards to this, looking to waive competitive bidding based on the fact that we could get those three quotes and approve as he has written in his cover letter.
Can I get a motion to waive competitive bids?
A motion to waive competitive bids for the columbarium?
Support.
Any questions on waiving competitive bids? So we did get three prices, they just weren't in a bid form.
If we're just in quote form?
Quote form.
Mm-hmm.
Hearing none. Roll call, both, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkanen.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then a motion to approve purchase of columbarium.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the columbarium from Patent Monument Company for the price of $8,074.
Support.
Any questions on this? Hearing none, roll call, both, please.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkanen.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Excellent. All right, next, we're going to move on to the City Manager's report.
All right, in addition to my report in the packet, I also attended the ZBA meeting. I wanted to announce the fire hydrant flushing will be starting October 13th through the 18th, from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM citywide. We have conducted interviews for the finance director position, the accounting assistant, and working on filling the building official position as well. With that in mind, and the urgency of filling the positions, and noting that a couple of them are department heads, which require commission approval, I would hope that we can have a special meeting next Thursday to get that before you for approval. I have not sent out any type of offer letters or anything yet, so that would be pending. So if you can, please try and keep next Thursday open, certainly we'll try and get that scheduled if possible. Met with wage trim regarding some of the ordinances, the ordinance amendments, so still working our way through that process. The Emergency Management Committee is scheduled for the 16th. There is a ribbon cutting at the District Court tomorrow at 9:00 AM. They have added a new prison entrance and done some other improvements at that facility as well. And then also, based on our consent agenda, just want to remind people, the trick-or-treating is Thursday, October 31st, on Halloween, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. That's all I have.
Any questions for the City Manager?
Can you go back, and is that October 16th?
October 13th.
For the meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry, for the committee, yes, the 16th.
And that's going to be here?
No, it's city offices.
No, it's city offices.
Any other questions for the city manager? Moving on to commissioner privilege and liaison reports.
I'm going to start. So last commission meeting, I had made some suggestions. You want to take one and pass it down, please? Just like in school, take one and pass it down. I made a suggestion to have a city commission request for department information form, and I just quickly typed one out today. I also looked at the FOIA form and threw some stuff in there, just keeping it very basic. I don't expect this to be, you know, approved today or anything like that, but I would like to be able to get it on the next meeting's agenda, so that we can start tracking these information requests, what departments they go, what department is being requested, and verification by commissioners, other commissioners, staff hours, so we can see how our tax dollars are being spent on these requests. And that's it.
Okay. Paul?
I don't have a lot to say, I'll just say that we did have a very successful, another weekend with Comic-Con, or week Saturday. We had quite a few people here in the city of Marine City enjoying the Comic-Con event. And with the weather being not as great as it could be, a little dicey, we still had, I would say, we still had one of our, probably one of our largest attended Comic-Cons. So we find that being downtown is kind of a plus, but you always have the weather to deal with. Other than that, I think that's about all I have to say this time.
Mr. Flossin?
Planning Commission was canceled. And so there was nothing on it from last week for the building. I do think that rumors spreading about the downtown, about the mall area, I've been asked by several owners of the mall property, the grocery store, the show, the guy with the lending place. There's stuff going on down there. It's not just all over. But the rumors are going around that everybody's closed, and the mall's going to be closed is just a rumor. That's it.
Just want to remind everybody that there are some good events going on in town this weekend, so come on out and enjoy. It looks like the weather's going to cooperate, and just go on down, enjoy a fall day in our beautiful town. Have fun and be safe.
Nothing.
Nothing. Just to be quick, I want to thank a couple people in town. A gentleman asked me to get a flagpole, to get a flag on it in this area that hasn't been flown in a while, since it's actually at the ferry. And Sergeant Westrick, on his time off, went and acquired me the key. Went down to the flagpole manufacturer and actually got me the key. And Jimmy McDonald helped out, grabbed, got us the actual flag for it, and we got it hung up the other day for the gentleman. And I just want to thank those two gentlemen, because it's just, it's something we didn't have to do, but it's just, it was just nice that it all came together for them. And the one, the older gentleman can look outside his back window and see a flag flying. And it's just something you requested, and it's like, sure, I guess we can do this. I tried to find the key, and we were unsuccessful at first, and then Paul volunteered, and I said, I guess I owe him one. So, well, thank you, gentlemen, for helping out. It just makes me feel good when stuff like that happens. Again, this weekend, it's pumpkin palooza, and Friday night, we'll be setting pumpkins out with just Mr. Moran's help.
Please come help me.
Please come help me.
They're not that heavy this year. It's a dry year, they're lighter. But anybody who has got some time, 6:00 o'clock on Friday night, we're going to start setting the pumpkins out. And on Saturday at 2:00, Chief Heslop and I and Todd May will be judging the pumpkin dessert contest. So we're prepping right now, so getting ready for it. And that's about all I've got for tonight, so... I need a motion to go into closed session to consult with the city attorney to consider materials exempt from discussion by state or federal statute and consideration of the city manager's evaluation. There may or may not be action taken upon returning to open session, but I do need a motion to enter into closed session.
So moved.
Support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Murchison?
Yes.
Commissioner McCannan?
Yes.
Mayor Vandabosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.